All right, I'll call the meeting to order. The meeting of October 25th, the Planning Commission. Can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
And Chair O'Donnell.
Here. Now, if you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll ask the Vice Chair to lead us. Please join me. On the Pledge of Allegiance, this is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice and sorrow. I have not received any verbal communications requests from the audience. That's an agenda item. What I'm looking for now, if anyone wants to talk on a matter which is not on the agenda, because they do, they should let me know now. Seeing no one and having no cards on that, we'll move on to the agenda items. So, the next matter we have is consent items. And I'm trying to, I don't recall. We should have minutes, so that would be a consent item. So, may I have a motion on that? The Vice Chair?
Rather than make a motion, I want to seek clarification if I can. The minutes provide that, if it's important, the minutes provide that I led the Pledge of Allegiance. And since I was acting chair, I don't think I did that. I think Commissioner Badami may have helped us with that.
You're right about the relative importance.
Never know.
If you say so.
Well, there's no denial of that, so we can therefore accept that, I suppose, that the Chair did not lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Badami did. Is that acceptable to Commissioner Badami?
I accept that.
Without recollection. All right. Commissioner Hudes?
I would move to approve, but I had one clarification in the realm of importance of what we're dealing with already. On page three of six, it says Commissioner Hudes requested the motion to be amended to select three non-consecutive days to include a sports day. I would add the word "and" to include a sports day in at least one of those three, to make it clear.
All right. Any objections to that clarification? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to approve unless someone else has some corrections. A motion to approve the minutes. Vice Chair Kane?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. Now, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, we're moving right along. So, we move to the first and only public hearing. 202 University Avenue. I'd ask for a staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Before you tonight is a request for a general plan amendment and a zone change at 202 University Avenue. The general plan amendment would be from office professional to medium-density residential. And the zone change would be from office with a landmark and historic preservation overlay to single-family residential downtown and would continue with the landmark and historic preservation overlay. The requested general plan amendment was reviewed by the General Plan Committee in September of this year. This committee forward a recommendation of approval to the Planning Commission and the Town Council. The proposed general plan amendment and zone change would be consistent with the pattern of land use and zoning in the surrounding neighborhoods. Additionally, replacing the existing office use with a single-family residential use would reduce the parking requirements and traffic generated by the property. For these reasons and the analysis provided in the staff report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission make the required findings in Exhibit Two to your staff report and forward a recommendation of approval to the Town Council. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
Mr. Mullen, I forgot to mention your name, and the Vice Chair chastised me for that, so thank you, Mr. Mullen.
I appreciate that.
It was very important.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Yes, Commissioner Hanson.
I just had one question that I did not ask when we had our General Plan Committee meeting. The current tenants, they are tenants in the House, the law offices that are there now. If this is approved, the owners are leasing to the tenants, and they wouldn't be in complainings with our zoning. But I'm sure it's just a timing issue. I don't think it impacts the decision, but I was just, wanted to know kind of how the timing would play out on that.
Sure. It's my understanding that the law offices are no longer operating out of that location, but it's, there's a therapist working there. The applicant can provide some clarification on that. Regarding the timing, both the, let's see, Exhibit Four and Exhibit Five to your staff report, I'm sorry, Exhibit Four and maybe Three, include a conformance with zone condition that states that the existing office use shall cease within two years of adoption or approval. This would allow the applicant to, or the owners of the property, to fulfill the lease requirements for their tenant and then transition it over to a residential when they're available.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? If not, I'll ask the applicant, Ms. Worsima. Second time I've seen her today. It's my pleasure. Would you make your presentation?
Good evening, Commissioners. It's, I'm not sure I've ever been here when there's this few people and everyone's all giddy because we might get out of here before nine o'clock. Don't jinx it, right? Trust me, Commissioner Kane, I'm not nearly as chatty as you are.
No comment.
And I mean that in the kindest of ways. All right. Before you today, we bring a project that we'd like to actually return to the housing stock in compliance with the general plan for the town. And then also, we are very interested in maintaining its historical character, status, et cetera. So, today, I'm sure you've all been buying it. It's a corner property. It's currently zoned office professional. We are interested in zoning it to the R1D LHP, medium-density residential, with the historical overlay. As noted in the asterisks, we do want to maintain the current lease agreement, which is currently through December of 2018, however the ordinance allows us. To take that two-year timeframe to do so, I would respectfully ask that that be considered and potentially be part of any sort of conditions of approval. As you know, it takes a while to get through the process here in Los Gatos, whether that's the planning department, the historical committee, you yourself. And I'd like to be able to take that two-year timeframe so that the owner can maintain at least their current lease through the end of December 2018. And if not further, two years post today's date, or however that actually works. Sean, you can perhaps state more about that. And to clarify, Commissioner Hanson, there is a mental health counselor, kind of a therapist that's occupying the spot today. It was previously occupied by a lawyer's office that had that QT sign out front forever, it feels like. And in the historical paperwork, we did provide when it was last occupied as a single-family residence. It's pretty clear when you drive by that this was a single-family residence downtown. We are interested in maintaining or returning it to be that. And this just kind of steps through, you know, what we're interested in doing. Obviously, changing the zoning, maintaining the historical district. Obviously, I can't change the year built. Lot area remains the same. Coverage in an R1D LHP is unlimited. Parking spaces moved from the five-stripe stalls that you see there today to two residential spaces. We are hoping to provide a detached two-car garage on this property. Allowed floor area. Currently, we're sitting at 2163. The allowed floor area, well, is 2163, and a 613-square-foot garage. Let's see. FAR as calced, just so you guys know that we did our math correctly per the charts when we turned to an R1D. So, a 2,000-square-foot home, plus or minus, and a 6,000-square-foot garage.
6,000 square feet?
Pardon?
600 square feet?
Two, 613. Hold on, let me stop.
No, that's okay. I think, I think you just misspoke.
612 square feet for the garage.
Thank you.
Sorry. 2,163 for a single-family home on the property. As you know, we are located in a historical district. And if you look at the neighborhood analysis that we provided you, you can see that everyone in our immediate, in our immediate neighborhood is actually a single-family residence, which I think also attributes to us returning in that direction. Here's some current pictures of some of the homes, most of which obviously have a Victorian-inspired aesthetic as their overall structure design. So, just some surrounding neighborhood pictures, in case you haven't been by. Existing house, there is some kind of neat Italianate-Victorian character to this home, which we do intend on preserving. And then, let's see. Has the town approved the existing office used in 1978? So, that would be the last time that I think anyone probably used it as a single-family residence. Side views from Miles Avenue. Back views with the asphalt wonderland parking lot. Site plan. You can see that it's kind of got that typical single-family residence, which we're trying to maintain. Existing floor plan of the house, even though this has been used as an office, there are kitchen cabinets here, there is a full bathroom with a shower here. You can see that the floor plan actually has remained as is for a single-family residence versus office use. Existing elevations, front elevation and Miles Avenue elevation. Nice, tight, little Italianate-Victorian home. Oh, let's see. Back elevation and side elevation. So, some of the things that have changed on this property are obviously some ADA-compliant ramps here to get the office use going on. Completely not in character with the rest of the house, but I think we intend on changing all that. And a sneak peek at what we hope to bring to the town in terms of restoring this home to its corner lot caliber and Italianate-Victorian, rest, single-family residence. And that's, that's it, I guess. I don't, I don't have a long-winded presentation today. I'm not trying to offend anything.
We'll entertain questions. Before we do that, I just want to establish, has everybody visited the property? And that's yes from everyone. Okay, Vice Chair Kane?
I visited the property today and was given permission by the tenant to make a close walk around these very large windows, so I wanted them to know who I was. Could you put your proposed slide back up, please?
I knew this was danger, danger for me to include proposed, but...
No, it depends. See, at first glance, that relieves some of my concerns about what might happen in the future. The house is tired and shows a lot of wear and tear. And clearly, the word that comes to mind is restoration, as opposed to any four-story apartment building. This is pretty much what you are thinking?
Yes, it's the intent of our client to return it to a single-family home for them to reside in, not to rent out. They do intend on keeping it single-story and requesting to do a two-car detached garage in the back corner of the property.
I looked at the floor plan, and it seemed as if, if you were in one bedroom, you had to go through the other bedroom to get to the bathroom. And how much internal work are you anticipating? Would you add, would you add a bath?
Yes. We are intending on removing this bathroom back here and kind of wedging it over here in between these two rooms. The intent is to have a three-bedroom, two-bathroom home. We will make use of the existing cellar for mechanical and storage for the home and then extend out the back into where the parking lot area is to create a great room, family room, and opening up this area that's very constructed, constricted, and convoluted into a kitchen, family room.
And you would take off the ramps?
The ramps would be leaving.
And you'd repair the front porch?
Front porch would be repaired.
Can I just interrupt for one second? I'd like some clarification from either the Town Attorney or staff. We're not approving the house, or we're not approving the interior. All we're doing is changing the zoning. You will have an opportunity to come back later, I assume, and get approval for any changes you're going to do there. Is that correct, to staff?
That's correct.
Okay, so whatever she tells us now, we should, we have to understand, we cannot, that she wouldn't be telling us the truth. She is, but she's not held to that. So, if you want to pursue that, go right ahead.
That's exactly what I was doing, because that's what's...
No, but it doesn't bind.
The Speaker brought it up when she went into the proposal.
It doesn't bind. If you want to talk about what she might do, go ahead.
And, in reality, the, what the property is going to look like is not the issue. The issue is whether the zoning fits in with the surroundings in the neighborhood and is a correct fit from changing from commercial to residential. For example, once you make this change, someone else could buy this lot and propose anything on a residential. It would have to go through our historical and through the proposals, but certainly you can ask the questions of the applicant.
You understand my intent. It's a gem, and I wanted to protect it as best I could. Thank you.
Other questions? If not, we have no other cards. So, I guess it would be a time just to say, did you forget something that you'd like to add now?
No, thank you. It is our intent to make it a single-family home and maintain its historical status.
All right, thank you. I will close the public input to this public hearing. And Commissioner Badami, you have your hand up.
I thought staff summed it up really well on page four, under their summary, that it would be consistent with the pattern of land use in this neighborhood. So, to me, this is one of the easiest decisions that I've had to make this year, in that I would be in support of forwarding a recommendation of approval to the Town Council.
Is there a second? Commissioner Birch?
If that was a motion, I'm second again.
I took it as a motion.
I will put that into a motion. That is a motion. I moved to forward a recommendation of approval for general plan amendment, application GP-17-002, zone change application Z-17-001. I can make the required findings for sequo, and I can make the required consistency with the town's general plan.
Okay, and that's the second S to that. And does the Town Attorney have something you want to add?
And just as clarification to the question of the grandfathered use. So, it will be implemented if the recommendation is set by council. It changes immediately, and then it becomes really a non-conforming use for those two years where it's allowed to continue.
Let's clarify that, too. As I understand it from Mr. Mullen, I know whether it's Town policy or whether it's in the ordinance or whatever it's in, that apparently they have two years in which to...
It's actually a condition, too.
Pardon me?
It's actually a condition in the...
Okay, so that's there, and you intended those conditions to be incorporated? And you did, I think.
Yes, I would like that to be incorporated into my motion.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Hanson?
I only wanted to comment that, that when we heard this at the General Plan Committee, not only was it approved as noted in the staff report, but it was unanimously approved. I think everyone on the committee, since there is no video recording, felt that it was, mentioned items of the general plan, which made this very consistent in terms of use change.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I'm in support of the motion, and I would, you know, commend the resident, the applicant, on the approach for this property. Land Use One says to preserve, promote, and protect the existing small-town character and quality of life within Los Gatos. And I think that this is exemplary of that. It is, there are a lot of land use goals in the general plan. This one is the first one that comes up, and it's, I think, a very important one. And this was obviously a residence that was sort of an office, but it was always more a residence in appearance than an office anyway. So, I think it's a good thing for the property, a good thing for the applicant, and a good thing for the town.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll call a question. All those in favor, say aye, please. It's unanimous. And we have your comments.
There are no appeal rights, since this is a recommendation, so it will be set at the pleasure of the mayor on a Town Council meeting, and then we will notice it appropriately and go through the remainder of the process.
Thank you very much. That's all we have on the agenda, except now we would have a report in normal course. So, Mr. Paulson, anything to report?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One is just to make sure everyone knows, and if you have friends who may be interested, the deadline for applications for committees and commissions is Friday. So, we look forward to receiving those, for there's a number of positions open on various commissions. And all of that information is available on the clerks portion of the website, I believe, and probably somewhere on the front page, but we'll get that. Last night, Town Council held a study session regarding traffic. So, if you have an opportunity to watch that, they really were receiving information from staff, hearing from the public, and then getting really an update on some things that have been done or being done, and then some other options that they'll consider in the future of other items to try to address the challenges around traffic. And then last week, the council heard two items. One was a cellar recommendation that was forwarded from the council, and they adopted that as recommended by the Planning Commission. And then the second was the Winchester Office Building. And they ended up approving that project with a condition to modify the northern corner and a couple of other conditions to address views of the hills. So, we're waiting for the applicant to submit revisions that they believe address those comments, and then staff will evaluate that and move forward.
I would like to make a comment here myself, and then I'll turn to anybody else. But I had occasion to review the, a video of the hearing on the 17th. And it was apparent to me that the council, I was not happy with the way the matter got before them, thinking that we had, I think the quote was punted, the matter to them. I want to say that if it appeared that we had punted that to them, I'm sorry for that appearance. My recollection of our hearing, which was, I think, in April, April 24th, I think. In any event, it was in April, was we had a lot of problems with that particular project, not because necessarily of the project itself. For example, I liked the project. We had concerns, which were policy questions, that being the gateway to the town. And we felt it was a very, very important question, and we had some great difficulty among ourselves coming up with a solution to that problem, thinking it was somewhat above our pay grade. And therefore, we did arrange to get the matter before the council, thinking that that was an opportunity for them to give some guidance. Unfortunately, apparently, our motion relied on the record, and I'm not altogether sure the record was clear to the council. I would like to think it was clear when we, when we established the record. But I will say this, in the future, I will suggest to us that we become much more clear in our motions. In the past, we've, from time to time, said, well, the council has the whole record before them, so we don't have to be too precise. But after watching the council with this matter, it's apparent to me they do need us to be more precise. So, I will recommend to us that, and I will also say to the council, we really thought this was an important matter. We had difficulty deciding it because of its importance, and we felt that they were the proper body to decide that very important issue. To the extent that we didn't explain that, mea culpa. So, are there other comments? I'll strike down here. Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you. And I appreciate the Chair's comments and guidance on future issues similar to this, because I think there may have been some confusion that items that were discussed, you know, were not restated explicitly in the motion. And there were a number of items, including setback, guidance that wasn't followed, recommendation on traffic flow from a side street, as well as architectural concerns. They weren't necessarily unanimous points. They were points of individual commissioners. And so, perhaps bringing, bringing the issues forward into a motion would be helpful so that at least a majority consensus can be perceived by the council going forward. The other thing that was mentioned by at least three and maybe four commissioners was that the Planning Commission was looking for an opportunity to discuss the development on Winchester and the development even beyond Winchester with the number of office buildings that are being proposed there and specifically the request for a study session. So, I wanted to remind people about that and maybe ask staff whether there is any status update on that request for a study session and maybe, or to remind me what the process is for getting study sessions.
It was apparent to me that the council, well, what the council did was apply existing rules without any concern for the location, which I take it is a message. They're not, or they appear to be not as concerned about that gateway as we were. So, I take that as the message. If it is not the message, I think a study session would be necessary. If they think that they're citing the rules, I remember one of the comments was, well, we have rules for housing, we have rules for offices. Why are you guys making this so hard? Just apply the rules for offices, and there you go. And that's my understanding of the basis of their motion. So, if that's the way they feel about the gateway, there's not much to study. Commissioner Hanson?
So, I concur with Commissioner Hudes's comments as well. But I wanted to add on another thing. One of the things that I recall that we struggled with and was brought up, and this came up in another related office hearing, was sizing relatives in the neighborhood. So, as I recall during that hearing, the proposed office use was about 30,000 square foot. The next biggest office building in that neighborhood was down the street, and it was about 15,000 square foot, if I recall. So, this is more than twice the size of it. And then even if you went over to university, we were looking at nothing, you know, nothing much bigger than that, if even that big. And so, one of the criteria that I know we looked at when making our denial was that neighborhood compatibility. And so, you know, there's multiple dimensions to the decision, and I feel like we did look at a lot of those variables, including the codes that actually applied to the site itself. But that sizing relative to the neighborhood thing is still an unanswered question. And maybe it's something that we, you know, need to not put as much weight on. But, you know, since this is kind of new territory, having a building that's twice as big as the nearest thing, and we've seen this before, you know, is this a policy decision that we're making de facto by each individual decision? That, that yes, we want to encourage these much bigger office buildings in Los Gatos even in spite of the fact that, you know, our jobs-to-housing ratio is larger than we wanted it in the general plan? You know, that's fine if we're doing that, but I don't think we had that kind of guidance. And so, and that's also not a Planning Commission decision that we can make in terms of setting policy about how we're going to approach looking at buildings. So, I still think that, that question about sizing relative to the neighborhood is an outstanding question, and it will continue to be an outstanding question for some of the other office buildings that we know are out there that are coming to us. So, I'm hoping that, that we can get some guidance on that. But I did want to make sure that, that was clear, that that was another factor. And I believe a number of the Commissioners felt that was an issue that was a negative on the project.
Commissioner Badami?
I would just like to make the point that if every application just simply followed the rules, we wouldn't be here. Why bother with the Planning Commission? So, I believe it's our job to vet the application. It's an architecture and site application for which we use good judgment and discretion and for which we apply goals and policies of the general plan.
Other comments? Yes, go ahead.
I don't think we should guess at what the Town Council is asking the Planning Commission to do. If, if the decision they made regarding this property appears to give us guidance, it may be different for you, for me, for you. It would be more useful, if it's possible, for the town to be, the council to be more specific in what... They could say we punted, or we dropped the ball. What specifically do they expect us to do? We did have some issues with gateway. We had a lot of issues with traffic and that whole proximity to Dave's Avenue. We're going to have those issues come before us again. The size, the compatibility with the neighborhood, that's all going to... the neighborhood, that's all going to come back to us again. What specifically were the areas that the town wants us to do differently that we, they felt we could have made a decision around? And having specific guidance around that might be useful for us going forward.
Commissioner Yanif, I agree with that, and what I took away, listening to the Council, I remember, this would simplify things, and if that's the way we're supposed to approach things, makes life easier. The comment was, what does the size have to do with anything? Because you, you people are talking about how large houses are. This isn't a house, this is an office building. Office buildings can be 35 feet or whatever it is, and it was like, why are you worried about it? Now, if that's the message that we're supposed to have, I find that hard to believe, so maybe we do need a study session. But if, on the other hand, the Council really means that, then I think we have to say, okay, that is a policy decision, and perhaps they should be more clear that that's what they mean. We talked about the view of the, of the mountains, and so did they, but if all we're going to do is mechanically apply the office rules, I'm not quite sure where the view of the hillsides comes in. And I think Commissioner Badami's remark is correct, we're supposed to be applying with some judgment. We asked for help from the Council on that judgment, because they set the policies. I don't believe we had that discussion, and therefore, I don't feel enlightened from what the Council did, except to the extent that one can say it's mechanic. If they meet the mechanical things, that's all we have to worry about. I can't believe that, however, is the message, but that is what I heard, so I'm sure I'll hear more. Any other comments? If not, I think we can adjourn. Thank you all.